Everyone, especially Ted Jordan's class. Thanks for being here. It's a long meeting. So if it's okay with Mr. Jordan, I'm gonna invite you to maybe not stay the whole five hours for the meeting. It's three and a half hours, three hours long, so please sit down and listen. Thank you so much for being here and interested. I'm gonna pass the meeting off to our finance chair, Elizabeth Seifries.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the first of five planned budget workshops. The budget review schedule is available here tonight in hard copy as well as on the school department website. All budget workshops are open to the public, recorded and posted online with public comment welcomed. The school board will open and close each meeting with the opportunity for public comment. This is a little bit different from our regular business meeting, so I'm just gonna say that again. We open and close. So we welcome public comment at the beginning and then we welcome public comment at the end again. Questions and comments may also be sent to me. My name is Elizabeth Seifries. I'm not gonna try to give you my email address, but no one ever spells my name right anyway. But you can go to the school department website and navigate to the school board section and then you will find my email address. So we're gonna start off with the school board's goals for the 2020-2021 budget. Number one, maintain and improve the high quality of education for every student. Number two, careful examination of line items and consideration of the success and effectiveness of the expenditures in order to provide a fiscally responsible budget. Number three, support for the 2020 through 2025 strategic plan goals. And number four, clear and continual communication throughout the budget process. So a little more about those goals. With regard to goal one, the continued excellence of our schools is a great advantage to our community and a point of pride in being Elizabeth. This commitment to outstanding education is evident in our Blue Ribbon Awards and state and national rankings. Thus, the singular purpose of each item in our budget is the continued or improved quality of education for our students. Next, each line item must be scrutinized to understand how and why it is contributing to student success in concert with its impact to budget. Budget goal three highlights our broad community and school department priorities for the next five years. Our current strategic plan goals were adopted in the fall of 2019, following a community forum of over 100 people. It was called the Futures Search, which included community members, parents, faculty, staff, students, administrators, missing labels, but tons of people were there. And the thoughts, aspirations and concerns from that large gathering were distilled into these strategic plan goals. So the first strategic plan goal is health and well-being. Our schools will provide a supportive learning environment in which physical, social and emotional well-being are valued and promoted. Second goal is global competency. Our students will be personally responsible, aware, empathetic and engaged local and global citizens. The next goal is multiple pathways and definitions of success. Our schools will value, promote and celebrate multiple pathways and definitions of success. Safe, sustainable and effective facilities. Our schools will be safe and effective facilities. They will be updated and maintained to meet the needs of students and staff in accordance with the long-term financial planning. And finally, environmental responsibility. The school department will prioritize environmental responsibility, including stewardship and Finally, in order for all stakeholders to understand and be a part of this budget process, therefore giving it the robust review and input that it deserves, the superintendent and school board must communicate clearly and often throughout the process. We will hold these goals, and they're sort of goals inside of goals, as we examine each cost center, each department, each school and each program. As we move through every step of this process, we must also keep in mind the ongoing building committee conversation about the necessary improvements to and possible replacement of our buildings. Tonight, we will hear from each of our administrators and directors with an overview of his or her department or school. This is a chance for all of us to get a big picture view of all the pieces of our school department and how those parts come together to provide an excellent educational experience for our students. In order that we might have time to hear from all departments and get a global view tonight, which is our goal, board members will make note of comments and questions and then email them to me. Can't stress that enough. I will consolidate and distribute the questions to the appropriate people and we have following meetings at our Q and A sessions. So at this time, the floor is open to any members of the public that wish to speak. I ask that you step out. Do we have an area for them tonight to step up to?
Nope, they can just step up to the end of the table.
Okay, and is there a sign-in sheet? I've seen it going around. Okay, great. So please step up. We'll have you just sort of step up to the end of one of the tables and give us your name and address. There'll be time at the end of the meeting as well. So I now turn this evening over to our highly esteemed administrators and department heads for their presentations. Again, please hold all questions and comments so that each person may complete his or her presentation. And Superintendent Donna Wofrom will make the introductions.
So before we start, I do have some news from Augusta. I was at a superintendent's conference on Thursday and Friday and they are planning on giving the ED279s to us by February 1st. They're working really hard, so that will be the notification of our state subsidy, how much money we're getting from the state. And also, in the commissioner's budget request that she's putting in, it shows a decline in the mill rate. The mill rate will be down to 8.18 from 8.28. So that impacts the amount of money the state gives us and the locals give us. So that's good news, but it's down. So those two pieces of information. So we're starting tonight with Jason Mantaridi, principal of our Concord Elementary School. So Jason, stay right here. Jack, can you pick us all up if we just stay here?
Sorry?
You can pick us up on the table.
I can, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, Donna. And I'd like to thank you again, Donna, just for facilitating the beginning of another great budget process this year and have a thankful one for the opportunity to present tonight. You all should have my packet and I actually, if it's not too difficult, I had planned to kind of present in a slightly different order than the packet is in. So I don't want to confuse anyone, but if you kind of look, page through my packet, what I'd like to do is start with new program position evaluations. If you just take a minute, if you open it up, it may be easier to just take it apart, I'm not sure, but I believe they're last in the packet. So they look very much like the proposals, but you're just looking for the evaluation positions. So I'd like to start with those to kind of celebrate some of the things that have been happening and then move into kind of the goals, staffing the school and highlight a couple of proposals I have for some of them. So again, you know, I always like to start just thanking the board and the community for the support that we received. So that's why I start with the evaluations these, because these are positions that were approved and were new last year and things are working out really well. So I'm gonna start with, the first one is, the program position is 504 Support Ed Tech. And so that is a position that was brought about because we had a student with some particular needs that required additional adult support. And so obviously, I can't go into great, any great detail about that position. It's been extremely beneficial and needed. And I note at the end, at the end, so actually, it's not on here, but it looks like it didn't all copy. But anyway, so this position is determined, the need for the position is determined by a 504TE. So as of right now, we require the position and I will be working with a team, which includes teachers and parents and administrators, to determine if this position is needed going into next year. So in a way, it's to be determined. We're assuming we may need it, but we're being very thoughtful and critical and only asking for what we need. So I don't have a solid answer for you, but I still wanted to just tell you that it's been something that's very needed and beneficial and may be needed next year, if that makes sense. So the next piece, the cafeteria and recess support aides. So just to go kind of back to this again, this is something that we are very grateful for and it's impacted our school greatly. So there are actually four positions that are each, they're each 2.25 hours per day, about four positions in the budget. We have only this year been able to fill two of them. And so it has increased predictability and it's increased planning time for teachers. It has, it's now that we're getting on a roll, we're beginning to create more consistency and expectations in the cafeteria. You know, the more we hire great people to do this and retain them, the more consistency we'll have over time. So although we filled only two, I'm highly recommending that we leave the four positions that are in there, in there again, and really try to get creative and approve and fill all four for next year. That would be my goal. We have made it this year and been successful with two, but I think we see great benefits from four, if we could fill all four. So I'm recommending that those stay in the budget and see. So finally, for the evaluations, last year, we were able to, we were fortunate enough to increase a health and wellness position from .6 FTE to full-time. And that enabled us to serve all students that wanted with health and wellness instruction. And so our K and 1 students have, this year for the first time, been able to access a mindful movement class in the allied arts rotation. And it's been going very well. I've been several times observed and talked to kids and talked to teachers and things are going well. And so we're able to, from that, provide this benefit for our children and we've been able to create and maintain equity and planning time for teachers through that as well. That's another impact of it. So that's been wonderful. So what I'll do next is go to this, the one-page, this, or actually a two-pager. And so I'm gonna go through the staff I'm recommending, including current staff, and then I will, from this, I'll highlight a couple of new proposals I have. Okay? So it's right here. So you can see, just going through the projected enrollment, we are, you know, we never know for sure what kindergartens we'll bring. We're hearing, people are already calling to register, we're hearing a lot, so we're going to project approximately what we usually have, around 100 students. So that would, and then grades one through four are a lot, of course, easier to project because many of the students are already present in the school, so that speaks for itself. So based on that enrollment, just going down, recommending, sticking with two administrators, sticking with having two secretaries in the office as current. So under counseling, we currently have one school counselor. One of my proposals is I'm proposing an additional counselor for Poncove. So in my packet, I've included some supporting documentation and I won't get into this, but it's there for you to look at. It talks about American Counselor Association recommendations for ratios and it talks about what our ratios are, so you can look at, there's information there for you to look at. So the additional counselor is a new proposal. And what that would do is allow all students access to counseling services and more consistency that we're providing. Our one counselor with 525 students is often pulled in many different directions, has to cancel classes, cancel small groups, cancel. So we're finding that although she does an amazing job and works hard, lots of inconsistency there. And so, and we also would like to have our counseling team be able to not only provide more consistent service for individuals and small groups, but also focus more on our universal peaceful Poncove stuff and the assemblies and really kind of beef that up too. So there's a lot of layers that I can explain at a later time if we have more discussions. So if you look at regular education classroom teachers, there is, I'm proposing an addition of a classroom teacher. This year, we have 28. So if you remember, this year, we have a small group of second graders and a small group of fourth graders. That small group of fourth graders will be going up to the middle school. So now we will only have one small class. So going back to six grade four teachers would keep, would assure that class size for grade four is in line with budget recommendation, with our school board recommendations and guidelines. So due to enrollment, I'm recommending the addition of a teacher and that would be targeted for grade four. And then, you know, unless it's noted, there are no changes. So the rest of the classroom teachers, I mean, of course, there's gonna be a shift. Grade two will have six teachers and then grade three will be the small class of five. So allied arts, we're language, everything else is staying the same. And flip over to the next part of that one pager, or two pager rather. ELL stays the same, gifted and talented, our support staffs. Staff stays the same, except where it says regular ed support staff. I have one more proposal and that I'd love to talk to you about. The addition of a consistent permanent substitute at Poncove. So right now, of course, we're hiring subs every day from the sub pool. And the idea would be that we could see benefits from securing one person and being able to offer one person, however that's packaged and funded, a more consistent job every day at the school. And they would be subbing in classrooms every day, that they would know the school really well. If we have sub assignments where we need a particular higher level of skill, we know we can depend on that person and they would be highly trained. So I'm proposing a permanent sub at Poncove. And next, special ed. So of course, this really is primarily, I'm gonna leave it for Del to talk about, but Del and I have spoken, and so this is what we are seeing as anticipated special education staff, but I won't get into that. Okay, I'm almost done. So needs addressed, maintaining appropriate class size through the addition of a classroom teacher. Maintain and enhances RTI supports. I do wanna talk about that quickly. The permanent sub in the building can get us out of a lot of jams. So it's very common to be, to have staff out, we can't find a sub. We pull RTI attacks, they don't get the service they need. When we do, then students do not get the RTI service. Then when we pull those texts for a teacher, they're not able to do their duties, so we ask teachers to do their duties. They're there, we're using planning time. So there's a ripple effect from not having someone there to kind of help us through all these challenges. And I can talk more about that at a later time. So protecting teacher planning time, increasing access to guidance services and maintain safety for all students with medical needs, that's referring to the 504. And finally, just, I always put in here, needs not addressed. For a couple of years, I've been talking about that learning strategy position at Poncove. There are other things that are just more of a priority this year. I just wanna keep it, keep it in focus, but it's not, I'm not worried about it right now. The other things are more important. So that is what I have.
Great, thank you, Jason.
Yes, I do.
Next up, who is Tori Isbell, principal of the [inaudible].
So my packet's a lot smaller. If you took the packet apart, you'd have three pages. So really quickly, I can't believe it's already budget season. It seems like we've kind of just started school, so it always kind of speaks up on us. But I'm gonna go down through, I had zero new programs last year, so nothing really to report out on. We did create an experiential learning program, I'll talk about that in a minute, but it wasn't really technically a new program, it was at no cost. So I'm just gonna go right down through the one-pager, which is actually two pages, I believe, in your packet. Mine's probably about. So next year at the middle school, we have, we'll have about 47 fewer students, partly because there's a bubble group leaving eighth grade and a small group coming in fourth grade. So about 47 fewer students. Our staffing, administrative, counseling, academic supports are gonna stay the same and suggesting that we make a reduction of one teacher for next year. So that'll bring us down to, I think, 37.5. And I have it broken down here, 25 classroom teachers. I don't really need to read it all to you, I'm sure you can read it, but that's, that's what the reduction of one teacher is, one classroom teacher. All the other professional support positions are remaining the same with two administrative assistants. Our special education staff changed slightly from last year's budget. We actually added two Ed Techs. So that's reflected here with the 16 total staff. So total staff in the building, this current year is 67.55, next year will be 66.55 is what I'm proposing. With the budget that I have put forth, the needs that it meets for us and for our students is the continued support for responsive intervention programming. I think often that gets overlooked, but you know, if someone's struggling and not quite making it in some regular classrooms, math reading, a step that we have to support them and quite often it's a successful step, is a good responsive intervention, which meets one, two, three days out of the six-day cycle. And it really is about identifying gaps, filling gaps. And this budget keeps that. We have two of those teachers. We've toyed with the ideas and how to, how to kind of utilize that position. Sometimes it can be small group, but we've had one, we've had some really good luck pushing into some classrooms and we have data that shows that that really made a big impact on not only the kids that we were targeting, but it ended up impacting the whole group. So that is, I don't think we ever have the exact model, we're always shooting to hit it, but that has been a huge benefit for us. I think a celebration for our year would be the, we developed and started the experiential learning team for our eighth grade. It was really an effort to, gonna do a bunch of things for our kids. And A, they're gonna be responsible for learning the same curriculum that everybody else is learning in eighth grade. How they learn it and what time of year they learn it might be slightly different. Math is kind of the only thing that is really a hard thing to schedule into there, so math is, because kids are everywhere. We have some kids in geometry, some in algebra, some at the high school, like we have them all in a place for math. So that's not really as closely tied to it, but some experiential learning, I just, we just received a nice letter from a company in Maine that we've been partnering a lot, the experiential learning teams are reaching out into the community and partner with both the businesses. And we got a beautiful letter from one saying how impressed they were with the presentation that a couple of our young aides on our team made and how professional they were and well, like, versed in what they were, the material they were presenting. And some of their ideas were, first time they've really brought up to that, that group. So those, thus one example of how we're reaching out into the community through that team. And it's been, it's been a huge success. And also, we've seen an improvement in some attendance for some of the students that were last year struggling a little bit with attendance and this year, we've seen some improvement as a result of that. And it's kind of because it's a smaller group, it's kind of a little family. It's not smaller in class size, like 26, but there's a couple of teachers that rotate in for support throughout the day. And I think that family feeling is what really is kind of, you notice it if you're not there that day. You notice a little bit quicker. So I think that's been very helpful. And really, the major goal that we had was for our students to really develop a strong understanding of who they were as learners, what do they need, what are their strengths, what are their weaknesses, how can they become advocates for themselves? Because it doesn't, the value of a program shouldn't depend on if there's a sister or brother program at the next school. So it needs to make our students more prepared to be successful wherever they go to school next. And that really has been the underlying driving force of that. So I think the kids know that, they know it going in and they're starting to really kind of dig in and understand that, that they need to be their best advocates and know what they need. So that really is a goal of that team. What this budget does is it allows us, we have a plan at no additional cost to expand to a seventh grade experiential learning team as well, kind of in conjunction. It'll be slight partners, some things they'll partner with the eighth grade team, some not, but so that is, that is embedded in this budget. The budget also takes into account our desire to try to update two classrooms. Last year, we were able to update one and if you walk through the building, it would take you only one trip through to identify the one. So, and it actually gets to the point where everybody else is, how come I didn't get that? So it's, it's nice, it's, it brings a little energy back to those rooms that, that needed. There's some tired, tired material, equipment there. We started elective offerings this year during WIN. We, you know, talked to a lot of our eighth grade students and by the time eighth grade comes, you're really kind of burned out a little bit at the middle school. You've been there for four years, you've had the same teachers, you're almost treated like fifth graders a little bit. So we started electives during WIN, because we realized through our teacher observations, a lot of kids may be a little bit off path in their classrooms during the lesson, because that might be when they were with some of their friends. But they know that they go to WIN and they need something to do, so then they're just banging out their work in WIN. So we decided if we make WIN a more appealing option, that they may work harder in classes to make sure that work was done, whatever they could, and then during WIN, they could go do some preferred activity stuff. And that has been pretty successful. Students have to be in good academic or social standing in order to attend. So that also has been a pretty nice carrot, to make sure that people are not overworked or else they would be playing. So that, this, we kind of did that with no budget and I've embedded a little bit of money in here to help kind of fund that now. We've realized there are some needs that we have if we wanna offer some of the stuff that we wanna offer. So that's in there. Transportation costs, every year, it seems like we are always slightly off on transportation costs, so this year, I embedded, put some money in there for transportation. We never get our last bill really until summer, so it's always kind of hard to make sure everything's balanced out that way. So we've actually put a line in for our transportation costs to increase a little bit. The other thing that I've really taken pride in is when we go to CEEF or when we go to the Parents Association for some, some financial assistance or help, it really is given out pretty freely and I think the expectation is then if it's important to you, you start to budget for it yourself. And so you're not always going back for the same thing. And in trying to stay true to that, we've, I put the Spirit Series in our budget again. Last year, it got cut. We're doing it kind of a little bit less expensively this year with not really reaching as many kids as we would like, but I put it back into the budget again. I think it shows good faith when you go to ask CEEF for money for the Parents Association that you're actually trying to follow through and pick that bill up, because it's that important. Another example of that is our guidance department did, through professional services, has, did the Hardy Girls invoice command people that came in and did a presentation for all of our kids. That was funded through CEEF. It was a great success. I'm not gonna go back to CEEF, we're gonna put it in our budget, so that's, that's it. And then lastly, we're gonna continue, we're on a three-year rotation, so Caitlin tells me to replace, I think, three big band instruments that the school owns. Last year, we were able to replace one, might be a xylophone or something, this year that she has targeted. So she has some, some instruments that she's targeting. She tells me a three-year process and we'll be kind of caught up to where we should be. And then lastly, I think it's still a huge success is our peer observation opportunities for our staff at no additional cost. So Laura Briggs just came back yesterday and said, just in case I haven't told you lately, that is an awesome thing. She spent the day at King and came back energized and ready to go and it's just, I think it's empowering to see what other people do and to see what you do really well. And so I'm really proud of that. Some, what I would call unaddressed needs in this budget, continue to be some safety concerns. You know, we've all pretty much identified the defense along with Scott Diallo would be very helpful when we have kids outside recess, kicking balls, throwing frisbees, those types of things. The need for some type of an alarm system in the school. A door could be open on the weekend and it might be, you know, that's why somebody feels to go check all the time. But some type of alarm system and our cameras are in serious need of updating. You know, we can tell that there was a person somewhere, but that's about all that we can really tell. So hopefully they're wearing an orange sweatshirt or something. And then the last thing that's unaddressed, and it is one of the CEEF grants, and it was, we, they've got a grant this year for mindfulness and they're starting to get it out into the, into the classrooms. Didn't really find a good way to put that into our budget yet. We're still trying to kind of wait and see what some of the benefits are of that before we go to that next step, but I think, I think there's gonna be a future to that. And then lastly, big changes in the budget. I tried really hard just to stay at a flat budget, but the supply line, it's up six thousand from the approved budget of nineteen twenty. Not the year nineteen twenty, but the year two thousand nineteen twenty. And that six thousand was cut. Two years ago, we cut twelve thousand from that line. I got half of it back. Still trying to get that other half back, is really what that is. And professional services is on ten thousand dollars, which I just talked about. It's the Spirit Series and the Hardy Girls and Envoice Men. And equipment is up by five thousand dollars from that same two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget. And again, that was, that's five of the ten thousand. It's cut two years ago. We got half of it back. And that's really, the equipment line is really where you get the money to update classrooms. That's largely what that is. So I think with that, I'm done.
Next topic is the chart. I'm going to start preparing this, and I made the math error on the first page of your cost center summary. So I want to give everybody a corrective perspective. To leave your merits, I know. So this year, I didn't bring my foot charts. You'll miss them terribly. I'm thinking there'll be some lasting remembering of sort of student load per teacher and average class size and all that sort of stuff. So that, that information is reflected here, but I didn't think I would, I thought it would be adjuvant when my part could try to repeat that highly popular presentation. So the theme of my, of the budget proposal for the high school this year is this. I look back at last year's cost center summary and projections, and we came into this year and stacked the high school from a budgetary standpoint. You stacked, because that's, that's what I asked you to do, and you're very supportive of it. The staff really was designed to serve five hundred and eleven students. In fact, our student population is five hundred and twenty-nine, five hundred and thirty right, right now, which was due to a wholly unexpected influx of new families in Cape Elizabeth. Then you can have kids descend to the high school. And next year, we are projected to be at five hundred and fifty-three students. So from our projection of five hundred and eleven last year to our projection next year of five hundred and fifty-three, we're up forty-two students. So I do have some staff proposals to put in front of you for any further consideration to try to address those needs. Last year, in anticipation of a reduction in student population, we cut out a three-fifths math teacher, which we wish we had this year, but we don't. So the class sizes there have increased. We cut out a Latin teacher as well, so those kids ended up taking other classes. So I don't know if the students who are sitting in the audience or other students notice it, but the class sizes have crept up a little bit in the last couple of years on average. So we're trying to address that. And, and so these budget documents, the purpose of them is to sort of put that into perspective. So I'm not going over the first two spreadsheets. I'll, there'll be some information that I'll give to you that'll be pertinent to putting those into perspective, but I'm really starting on the third page of your packet, which is the first page of the cost center review. And so that corrected sheet that I gave, just leave you with your paper for the first page of that cost center review document. So the position, the new positions that I have, I'm proposing to add are, first of all, I'm coming back again, I think this is the third year or maybe even the fourth year in a row, for a proposal for regular education literacy support teacher. We have really good support available in the high school for students who struggle with executive skills. We have decent support, social work and other support for students who struggle with emotional issues, and particularly anxiety, which has been the most, most significant increase in one at the high school and is in fact increasing nationwide. The one area where we don't have support, that sometimes we scratch our heads and do the best we can, but we don't have a great solution to, is regular education students who struggle with reading. There were a few years where we did have a regular ed reading literacy teacher that made a difference for kids. And so I'm proposing, and it's under this category of academic support, I'm proposing a three-fifths, zero point six FTE literacy teacher, which is the same proposal that we reported forward last year, but we just couldn't make happen. The other, under the category of academic support, the other new position I'm proposing to add, and I'm going to, I'll come back to it at the end when we go to the new, new position proposal documents, I'll talk about it a little bit more briefly, is a teacher leader position, a part-time teacher leader position. And, and I will explain when I get there. It's largely around coordinating a lot of new programs that we've added at the high school, most of which we've added without any new staffing to support them. And somebody to help, primarily to help the assistant, to work with the assistant principal to do a really tighter job in sort of coordinating those support programs that we have in place and would like to expand. So I'll come back to that. And then in terms of regular education classroom teachers, I'm proposing a seven, a increase of zero point four for English teachers. I would anticipate that that could translate into a full-time teacher who could do part-time literacy and part-time English, I'm thinking, but that's the proposal at this point. Under math, I'm proposing the return of the part-time math teacher that we cut last year in anticipation of a much lower student population than we actually have this year, as it turns out. I'm proposing a zero point seven five increase in science staffing, which would allow teaching three more sections than we currently are able to teach, again, to deal with that issue. And I will go into a little bit more detail with all these positions, sort of a specific rationale, when we get to the new position proposals. A part-time world language teacher. And then I am proposing a, it's the next to the last bullet here. It's a to-be-determined. And what I put down is a zero point three to-be-determined additional teacher in one of various electives areas, depending on what the course centers are. Those elective possibilities would be either social studies or computer programming, which is an increasing program that we want to support, or the arts. So it, so we're early in the, well, we haven't started the course selection process yet. We will next month. So I'll be able to get, as the budget goes through, I'll be able to provide more details to the board about what that might actually look like. Then under other support positions, Carolyn Young, many of you know, she's, she's our library and media specialist, and she does an unbelievable job. And she is such a support to teachers and students. And for many years, three or four years ago, we eliminated the support position that had always existed in the library in addition to the, in addition to the library. So Carolyn came to me, and she never comes to me and asks, asks for increases in anything. And she came to me a month or two ago and said, I am swamped in terms of keeping up with the day-to-day aspects of running a library, in terms of inventory of new books, just helping kids check things out and that sort of stuff. So she has asked me to put in the budget and request for the return of her library aid in the budget. So those are those three positions. And then if you turn to the next page of the, I'm projecting, and I, I'm projecting the same special education staff. I confess that I didn't connect with Dell to see if that's accurate or not, but I'm sure he'll fill us all in and should have done that. So then I do have on the, my, my cost center summary, a little more detail, which may reflect a little bit of defensiveness on my part from a couple of years ago, to try to get at, again, the myth of, the myth of the high school overstaffing that sort of came up a couple of years ago. It wasn't called quite that, but, so our student-teacher ratio right now is thirteen point five students per teacher. And two nearby comparison schools, our student-teacher ratio is identical. It's within a tenth of two nearby comparison schools that I won't name. And there's a little bit more detail about this in another document that I have in a little bit. So we are, we are not overstuffed compared, compared to other small, high-performing public high schools in this area. We're right with where everybody else is. Evaluation of new physicians from two thousand eighteen to nineteen, I didn't have any. So that's that. The needs that these, this budget proposal would address are reflecting the need of increasing student population, adding support for regular education literacy for students who struggle, who are not identified as special education students, and better coordination of many resources that I'll talk about a little bit later. Under, the unaddressed needs is primarily the physical building needs. My camera system, I can tell people when they're on the camera, when I, they're, it's actually very sharp at the high school. The problem is that only about twenty percent of the high school can you see. But the parts we can see, we can make students out, and they are in some critical parts. And I won't make them public, otherwise these students will start wandering around the uncamerated, invisible areas. They already know, they probably do already. They probably know better than I do. All right, so in terms of the non-salary budget, there is one very significant number, and I actually, and it, so there is a large increase proposed in equipment for regular instruction. And it represents, and there's a, this is a typo here, it is not twenty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. It is twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Computer programming is a program that is growing, and we would like to, to support to continue to grow. It is a, it is a constraint on the potential growth of the program if all the classes have to be scheduled in our computer classroom. And there's actually no reason why students can't use laptops for purposes of computer programming, it's just that we don't have the laptops for that. So that is the proposal, the proposal for twelve new laptops and a laptop cart to allow computer programming classes to be taught elsewhere than in that classroom right there. Then the co-curricula, there is a several thousand dollars, I think it's about seven thousand dollars, this is outside of Skype ends and those sorts of things. But there's a proposal for about seven thousand dollar increase in dues and fees under co-curricula, and that is to support an esports extracurricular program that started last year and is growing like gangbusters. The Main Principles Association actually just sanctioned it as a interscholastic club sport. And there are, there are dues and fees for teams who compete in that. So, so I propose some, some things there. The other, the other growing program that we have that the current budget doesn't reflect is we have a growing quiz bowl program. I think actually some of the students here are part of it, I believe. And Mr. Wagner, who's our achievement center coordinator, is working with a group of students and competing in quiz bowls in Maine, and they actually competed in a couple of Massachusetts recently as well, and doing very well. So we'd like to be able to support that as well. And now I'll come back to this third bullet point in a little bit, as it connects to another document that I have here. Okay, so the next document I have, and I'm not going to discuss this in any detail, I just want you to see it. So what I've done is I've given you a list of all of the class sections in the high school, who's teaching them, how many students are in them. So there it is. Where there are classes that appear to be a little bit low, there's usually an explanation for them, and I've given you that explanation. So all of, all of the numbers are there. And I'm sure at some point the board may have questions about it, but I just wanted to point it out. So for, the way this works is if you turn to Mr. Jordan, where's Mr. Jordan? He's, this is, he's on the second page, he's a fourth teacher down. So he teaches, Mr. Jordan teaches five classes, and his power school is right, and his class sizes are sixteen, seventeen, twenty-one, nineteen, and fourteen. For a total student load for Mr. Jordan this year is eighty-seven, which is just a little bit shy of the maximum under the school board policy guideline. Okay? So that's the way that works. At any point, I'd be glad to answer any questions about that at some future times. So then if you turn to the next page, you'll see my, my desire to have the board fully aware and having the perspective of our class size. Again, there's a little bit more detail here. Some of it we're ringing about for the board members who were here last year as well. And again, it's trying to put our class size into perspective. Our average class size this year is higher than it's been for most of the time that I've been principal here. Not a lot, but it's higher. And that's because we cut our staff and we had an unexpected increase in student population. Our student-teacher ratio is identical to what it was last year. And I've given you a list that will look familiar to some of you of high-performing schools that have been recognized among the best high schools in New England, and what they have according to U.S. News for student-teacher ratios. And you can see that we are on the high side if you look at most of those schools. And I didn't do any editorializing from those things. I didn't just cherry pick them. These are the ones that are thrown at the top in those states comparable to where we are in Maine. So, so I do think that it puts our numbers in, in good perspective. And I will say again, and the board has heard me say this every year, that, you know, I, I love giving tours to families who are considering coming to Cape Elizabeth. And they ask, they always, when they, they come, they ask lots of questions that are usually highly individual to their particular student's background or experience, what classes would they be taking, and that sort of thing. But the one question, without fail, I have, all, I am always asked is, what's the average class size? So if we went up anywhere near what the average class size would be if we were to move our student-teacher ratio close to the EPS formula, the Essential Programs and Services formula, our class size would be far larger than our, our comparisons points in the area, without any question. Then on the second page of this document, I've given you some information about, we do have some teachers who teach fewer than five classes. The normal class load is five. We have a number, and I don't think it's a secret thing with veteran board members, that teachers who give, serve two periods in our achievement center, teach four instead of five. So they teach two periods in lieu of having a fifth prep, basically so that they can support students through the achievement center. Our science teachers who teach classes with labs that are associated with them, teach four classes as opposed to five, because in addition to their core class period, they're also teaching lab sections, which are essentially the equivalent of a fifth, a fifth class. And then I have a little section here that talks about why art and technology classes are a little bit smaller. It's usually because of safety issues or equipment constraints in terms of numbers. And this year, we do have a particular issue of our health and PE classes are a little bit small. And there's a reason for that, and it's because we made a mistake in projecting our needs for PE adventure, the number of sections. We should have had two sections of PE adventure. We projected we would need three, because historically... because historically PE adventure starts here, and then kids decide to add it. And what's happened this year, for whatever reason, is it started here, and we actually had some decreases. Next semester, PE adventure is done, and the PE teachers are up, and health teachers are up the... They've always been in the past. But right now, Mr. Shea has three very small PE adventure classes. They were not projected to be the size that they turned out to be, but they are the size that they turned out to be. That was a mistake. Okay, so if I go on to the new programs and positions, I've combined the request for an English slash literacy teacher to reflect on one document. I think I've explained the reason for that, to really allow us to address the reading difficulties of students who are not identified students. And we have syllabus. And we would like to be able to do a better job of supporting them, so that's the purpose of that proposal. And the other part of it is just to address this increased student population. That's the English part of that proposal. The next page is the six tenths, three fifths math teacher. So zero point six in the high school is equivalent to three additional classes taught. A full-time teacher teaches five, so this would allow us to teach three additional sections compared to what we do right now. Depending on how the course signup goes, it might allow us to put... Have a little bit more coverage of math teachers in the achievement center, because this year we had to reduce that in order to address some of the concerns about class sizes. The next page is about the point seven five science teacher addition. So this also, even though the FTE is different, it is, it represents a request to hire a teacher to teach, teachers to teach three additional sections of science as well. It's just that with the additional lab time that's associated with that as well, three additional sections in science is point seven five, three additional sections of everything else is point six. So that's where that comes from, if that makes sense. Alright, so the teacher leader position. This one I want to explain just a little bit. So I would say that over the past ten years, if you begin with the Achievement Center, we'd go even farther back, but... In addition to talking about class sizes to teachers, one of the things that I always make a point of when I'm bringing new prospective families around the school is I I can probably and accurately say that I think we do a really, really, we have a lot of resources to support students who need extra support. And we have increased those significantly. And we have honored alternative pathways, the desire to provide alternative pathways for kids. I am proud of the fact that in the last three years, our enrollment paths has more than tripled. I think that's really great. We're now offering three dual enrollment sections, so that's kids who are concurrently enrolled in a high school class, which offers both high school and college credit. We have increasing numbers of students taking online courses for any number of reasons. We've added our, obviously, our student-driven learning program. We have academic skills to support students. In the past few years, under the leadership of Mr. Carpenter, we started off offering one section of freshman academy. We're now up to three sections of freshman academy. And Mr. Carpenter just led the creation of a section of sophomore academy, because he just identified some sophomores who had been in freshman academy in the past, and they were not going in the right direction this year, and they needed some more support and support for those kids. And I think there's more that we would like to do in terms of alternative pathways. It would be really helpful, and my vision is, to have somebody to work closely with Nate Carpenter, for whom this is a true passion and a huge strength, and has just created enormous dividends for the school, to work closely with him to sort of coordinate these alternative pathways, these creative pathways for kids, so we can add even more of those. So the idea would be to have a teacher be a part-time teacher, part-time teacher leader, not administrator, not part-time administrator, but part-time teacher leader. So the proposal is not for evaluative responsibilities or anything like that. It's really a teacher who's interested in exploring leadership and developing their leadership capacity and providing some leadership in some really critical directions where in conjunction, in cooperation with Mr. Carpenter, where I think we can really tighten and expand opportunities for students. So that's the teacher leadership position. I think I said everything I wanted to about that. So the next page is the high school library. I think I've explained that. Carolyn being Carolyn, there are lots of data in here, and lots of statistics about the number of media, the number of new resources, and all that sort of stuff. I'm not going to really do all that. It's pretty self-explanatory. I will say that this proposal, and Carolyn just presented this to me, it speaks to the issue. She's got really high standards for herself. She's super detail oriented, and I want to support her. So the next one is, and I do want to talk about this just a little bit, a part-time introductory French. We have not been able to offer students a French one experience at the high school for many, many years. And we would like to be able to do that. And it would serve the needs of two groups of kids. It would serve the needs of kids who have gone through the system at the elementary and middle school and have gotten some basic understanding of French, but they're not up at the level of level two. Because what tends to happen with those kids, if they're overplaced in level two, they can survive level two. They will struggle like crazy in level three. And many of them will stop their study of foreign language after level three. And we would like to see all of our kids take a foreign language every single year, even though it's not a graduate year requirement. The other group of kids that it will serve are the really, really, really... The kids who are really passionate about oral language and would like to take a second level language. And right now, we don't have anything to serve them. We do if they're taking French and they want to go to Spanish, because we do have Spanish one. We've not been able to staff French one. So we don't have anything to serve the Spanish kids who are passionate about foreign language, who would like to start a second foreign language. Then the next one is the, to be identified at some point, a part-time position for an elective program. This is my guess, is that we're going to need that with the number of the increase that we have. It's just hard to predict for the elective classes exactly where kids are going to land before we ask them to land somewhere. And the next document is the laptops. It explains that, but I think I've already explained it, and this document has the accurate number, so you don't have to make a correction there. And then the last document that I have, and then I've done, is there are a number of...
Jeff, can I just make a comment? Ours says it's twenty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-two.
Yeah, that's where I made the mistake.
Right, so it doesn't have the accurate number. I just want to clarify.
It's twenty-seven...
Yeah, I just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty-seven, five fifty.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that board members are clear on that.
My mistake. Thank you. So there are a number of, well, there's been, there have been a lot of new co-curricular programs added in the high school over the last two, three years. This is not a comprehensive list of all of them. This is a, this is a small list of those, I think, that involve the most time that do not have Skype ends, that reflect the time that teachers and staff members are now volunteering to make these activities possible. And so I'm, at the superintendent's request, I'm gathering some information about the hours that certain physicians take, and that's going to move the board, the only purpose of this document is to have it still be on the radar somewhere, and those are to be worked out. And I think that those are all pretty self-explanatory. They're just, at some point, I think through negotiations, potentially, requests for new or increased Skype in particular areas.
Alright. Do you see my document? It's just a key page document.
I got you, Dell.
Boom without the charge. First of all, I just want to start off the number of students that we're serving in some situations. A total of one hundred seventy-one, that's fifty-two at Poncove, sixty-seven at middle school, and fifty-two at the high school. With regard to staffing, I'm not looking to make any significant changes to the staffing levels that we have with regard to teachers, therapists, ed techs, and psychologists. The only addition would be one new ed tech two position at Poncove. And the reason for that is the number of incoming students through CDS. Jason and I have already met with Child Development Services, which is the preschool equivalent to special education. And so we've got an idea of students that will be coming in in the fall. And so that was the, why that request was made. The other piece I'd like to point out is, if you'll notice, the current outplace number has moved from two to three now. So we have three students that are outplaced at special purpose private schools. And that has, is an increase. And because of that increase, we have shifted... We had a social work position that was in the local entitlement grant. That's the federal fund that we received. And that was pulled out of the local entitlement grant and put into the regular budget, and you'll see that bubble with regards to the K through eight social work service, social work line. But, and the reason for that is so that we could a lot more of the local entitlement grant to cover those. And that covers most of the additional costs. And I just wanted to remind the board that all professional development, three of the ed tech threes, salaries and benefits, the outplaced students, and the technology needs, special education software, audiologist services, and the majority of supplies are in the local entitlement grant. This year's local entitlement grant was three hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred and ten dollars. And then the second page is the line by lines, and so if you'll... I just want to speak to the ones that certainly would stand out to me as a board member if I was looking at it. And that would include the social worker K through eight, which has a sixty-six percent increase. And that's because we pulled that social work salary and benefits. The social worker that is already employed with us, but now will be paid through the local funds versus local entitlement. We have enough, the overall increase is seven percent. There is one decrease, and that was we were able to decrease the cost of the extended school year of K through eight because we were able to do that for less than the budget of last year.
Can you go?
No.
You don't have to beat that time.
I'm telling you all, I'm the director of technology. He's got a show and tell to us.
Well, I have a show and tell, but I didn't want to put the iPad in there, so, you know, it would take too much time and so on and so forth. Well, thank you for inviting me. The proposed technology part of the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one budget reflects that there is no additions or subtractions from the staff, technology. We have, it's reflected, very conservative, but also meeting the needs of what we need to make sure that we're updated and staying current. Some of the highlights, for example, in Poncove, there's a twenty-five or twenty-six hundred dollars, or twenty-six thousand dollar increase because we're going to replace the laptops for the staff with a new lease from Apple. And so that's reflected, and that's what that has gone up. As far as the middle school, what's happening this year is Milti, which is government, state government, main state government program that was introduced with Governor King to make sure that there was all kinds of technology for seventh and eighth grades. This year, they're going to do a bridge year, which basically means that they're not quite, you know, they're trying to determine where they're going to take that program. So they have left, they left the old equipment in place for one more year with no cost or anything. And so that's why we have a decrease at the middle school as far as technology. As far as the high school goes, we have retired a three-year lease from Apple for the first wave of iPads, and that was a hundred thousand dollars. As you know, what we try and do is, at the high schools, every incoming freshman gets a new device, and they carry that device through four years. And at senior year, what the seniors do, is we turn the device, and we bring them down to the lower levels. So we keep repurposing all that. So we have currently, and we continue to support a one-to-one device from third grade all the way up to twelfth grade. And then the lower grades, there's sometimes we have ten devices or a two-to-one ratio. Other than that, looking for, and as you can see with the numbers, I'm pretty conservative. There's nothing really going up or down. It's just a balancing act to say, okay, this year I need a little bit more licenses for our MDM, which manages all the devices and so on and so forth. And I might not need as much network equipment. And so I rob Paul, pay for Peter, or whatever you want to call it. And that's basically it. Oh, besides the new, two new proposals, I have to talk about those, don't I? Alright. Well, the first proposal is putting a new projector system and audio system in the band room. If you go down to the band room and take a look at the equipment that they have for that size room, it is grossly understaffed, especially if you're playing the xylophone, you're in the back row, and so on and so forth. I don't know why they stick the xylophone in the back row, you know, but they have a hard time looking at the projector, the screen, it's very small, and the sound is very, very weak. And it's a very large room, so it's very undersized. So that, we went and got a local vendor to give us a run-through of the proposal, and that's what you'll see, the, I think it was about twenty-one thousand dollars that I'm asking for that type of program. Again, if it makes the budget and so on and so forth, we'll get more than one vendor to give us a rough estimate. The second one is my show and tell. In the corner there is a double robot. And what we did was, we were very fortunate, Waterboro School System let us borrow it for two years, two weeks. I wish two years, for two weeks. Tonight's the last time we can borrow it. I have to return it tomorrow. And what that does is it allows a student who is, cannot attend school for a long period of time. And it can actually move around into the different classrooms. The student actually drives it using her laptop, her iPad, or a tablet, or even a smartphone. And she could lower or raise or lower the screen and move the screen left and right. So instead, just a stagnant iPad doing FaceTime and so on and so forth, which works. This is a more robust and more enriched learning environment to do it. So I propose having one in there. We took it and we went through the high school, through all the corridors and in between all, some of the classes that were changing, which was kind of interesting. The only place that we ever lost a connection to it was in the elevator when the elevator doors shut. And we took it to Poncove, where it worked very well, and in middle school also worked very well. So those are the two new proposals. It has, the base of it is like a SAGWAY, so it automatically balances itself. And that's an older... And that's an older unit, and there's an iPad that goes in there, but now it's integrated with their own screen, which has their own microphone and their own video capabilities to it. And the other thing that the newer one does is the student doesn't, right now, the student would have to use the arrow keys on their keyboard to move it around, but the new one, they just point to a direction and it automatically follows that path to the direction. So there's a lot less moving it around and so on and so forth. It is a bit slow. Either that or I walk very fast, which is probably true. But it's a little bit slow and so on and so forth, so I suggested to, compared to the middle school, that we'd have to readjust to bell times to go from class to class. He's not too happy about that.
Hall monitor.
Hall monitor and stuff like that. But it really is another way to engage the students who unfortunately have to be home and can attend my requests. And those are my two proposals. Now I'm done.
Thank you all.
Eric, still isn't answering questions.
All right. I have a page as well to add to my package. Kind of just a summary of what I was looking at for capital improvements for the upcoming year. I'd like to thank you to the board for having me here. Thank you for taxpayers for supporting schools, and thank you to my staff as well. For the most part, the numbers within my budget that are up are solely due to increasing the facility's maintenance needs for each building due to the repairs that, I'll say, historically this year has been a trouble for the middle school in Ponco specifically. But we're feeling it in all areas in each building. Something as early as this morning, we had a, we came into the middle school in Ponco with a fifty-eight degree temperature within the building that we had to jump on fairly quick. And what had happened was an air handler over the walk-in coolers in the kitchen had a burst coil allowing all the water in the heating system to go down into the walk-in cooler and freezer. Thank you for Peter and his crew for tackling that end of the project. We got the coil repaired, got the system charge back up, the heat was back on. It always could be done a little quicker, but it was up fairly quick. And we're hopefully moving forward. But that's, that's the things we're running into. It seems to be, middle school in Ponco seemed to be a little jinx this year. So I've increased those lines according to what we're running into historically and just kind of bumping up and preparing. What we've done this year is I had some money set in equipment lines to purchase floor scrubbers and things like that. Thankfully, our floor scrubbers are holding out, so Marcy was able to move funds from equipment lines to help cover these other lines that are slowly going over. And the other increase that shows, because I believe I have the largest percentage out of everybody, was also due to the, taking the capital improvement line back to the five hundred thousand dollar mark, which is what it was when I came here. I'm open to increasing that. I think we all know there's a lot more meanings within the facilities end of it to see where we're going in the future. So I'm just kind of, the capital improvements list I have here, I'm just kind of, this is what I've been given by principals as needs, staff member requests, things that I've seen. There is a line in here for a large amount of security work to be done here, and that is electronic locks and security cameras as well. So I think we're, might have been mind-reading the principal, but I don't know. My first, the first page that I submitted for my packet is really just a summary of our department. I just wanted to remind everybody that we fall under the one-town concept and that we serve more than just the schools on a daily basis. I believe Cape Elizabeth is forty-six square miles, and within that, we serve forty-seven different structures, including all of Fort Williams and the Portland Headlight. Some highlights, our school buses do roughly about a hundred and twelve thousand miles in the last year. Custodial staff sets up about five hundred and twenty-five different event setups. This would be considered an event setup. Three schools, five town buildings cleaned by the night custodians, and a little over a thousand work requests completed by our maintenance staff. And again, that is townwide, not just within the school. A little summary of what our staff currently looks like today and how that breaks out. On the next page, I actually have four requests for positions, and some of this is due to trying to prepare the department, not only to grow, but to help cover. I have a large, to me, a very important part of my staff retiring this year. Two, well, basically, our bus scheduler, my administrative assistant, who also oversees the custodial staff. I'm using a van driver, and I'm losing a maintenance person. Everybody's retiring. So I'm trying to prepare our department for that. And I've always kind of, due to the size of what we have to cover, I consider ours, our facilities department more sized for a school district, and it should be a little more going in the direction of a college campus due to the amount of what we have to cover. So the first request I have is for an additional maintenance person that would serve in a night position. Basically, they would come on roughly around the same time as what the custodians do, and that's around two-thirty. And they would cover the night, Monday through Friday. And that would help with, the night maintenance person that's retiring is Bernie Shannon. And I've been fortunate enough that he basically lives right on the other side of the sandpit here, very close to the school. I can call him two o'clock in the morning, get him up out of bed, and unusually willing to come in. And that's one of the things I'm going to miss. So I'm trying to help also with adding to the maintenance crew, but to help cover that bracket of night hours where most of us go home, but the town buildings and the school buildings still continue to run until ten or eleven o'clock at night. So it also gives us the ability to cover places that are difficult to get into during a day, like a classroom, or maybe a certain office or things like that. It gives the ability to get projects done in those areas. The second position, this, this is more on the town side, but I'm looking for another custodian to fill in. That would be solely just for the town buildings. This particular submission is only in here because I believe, as it's written, an employee of the school, but we are reimbursed by the town for their services. So this position here would be solely dedicated to the town buildings, the five that we clean at night. I just need additional help within those buildings and try to get close to one person in each one of those buildings. The difficulty on the town side is really due to their later hours of operation. The next one is for facilities custodian on the school side. That, again, is just to help increase the staff that we have and the demands that are on our staff altogether. The actual location of this, I haven't figured that out yet. I think it's going to be more of a floater position. What we're running into is when we're fully staffed, things are pretty good. But it, I'll say, unfortunately, it's a rarity that we're fully staffed due to vacations, personal days, sick time, whatever. There's always this, this link missing every night, and it's a huge burden on the remaining staff that's here to try to toe that line. A custodian might cover like a wing of a building. So when that custodian's not here, the rest of the crew has to then fill in and try to get that wing of that building maintained to a point where it's ready for school the next day. And the last one is I'm calling it a facilities project manager. It's, could be labeled as an assistant to my position. This would be billed, both on the town and school, would be a shared expense. And that's really to, my focus is, they would serve it as an assistant in my absence, but it would also be to help with overseeing construction projects. And the ability to have more time to accurately bin things out the way we should. It's not so much a problem on the town, on the school side, because the school has a fairly substantial amount that we are allowed to spend before we have to put it out to bin. On the town side, I'm working with the town manager to get it increased, but it is very low, and it is very difficult. It's thirty-five hundred dollars. Pretty much everything I do every day is more than thirty-five hundred dollars. So it's been pointed out a couple times, and I've asked that they increased it. So we're working that out. But for instance, the playground that the school did this past summer, due to my current workload, I was only able to visit that project maybe three or four times while it was being done. And something of that scale, even a smaller project, but something of that scale should be visited almost daily, just to see that everything's being done properly and the way it's written on the blueprints. So I'm just looking to add to that position. And again, this also is going to take away from some of the Janet Hoskins, my current assistant. She's got thirty-plus years of institutional knowledge here. And when she retires, that's a huge portion of that going away. So this person would also fill a little bit of that void. And I think, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. As part of a capital improvement, we were told by the Public Works Department that services our vehicles, that they will no longer inspect one of our vans. It is in such bad shape, they don't want to put their name on it anymore. Unfortunately, at the end of last week, that particular van lost its power steering pump, so it's currently in a garage getting that done, so we can at least get it for the remainder of the school year. But we're now at a point where we're looking to replace that vehicle and get something newer for our fleet. That vehicle will be disposed of, only if it's worthy of selling. I can run through the capital improvements or wait until any Q and A later, it's up to you guys.
Yes, I think there's time.
Yep, okay.
And I think it's important.
All right, Ponco, we're looking at painting. It's the year, this is an annual thing we do every year. We pick a wing or a grade, and we tackle the classrooms and try to freshen them up. So in Ponco, we have the painting of the second grade classrooms, and that would also be new shades within the windows. That comes to twenty-two thousand dollars. That's based on a historical price for painting the classrooms over the past couple of years. Replacement of the stair treads and ramp area, handicap ramp, leading between the third grade and fourth grade areas. That's just due to wear and tear. Those rubber chains are at the end of their life. Jason and I have talked about the possibility of, his school is in need of an extra office space, so we're eyeing up an area similar to like what we did at the middle school, where there's a kind of a dead-end corridor that we were able to put a doorway in and actually has a window, and it's a fairly good location for one, and convert that into an office for their needs. Exterior door and hardware security upgrades, that's just kind of a general. What my staff and I want to do is really go through the buildings this summer and address some of the, some of the things that have been pointed out. Rob McVane, our maintenance supervisor, was able to attend one of the lockdowns at the middle school in Ponco, and we found a few things that are in need. And now that they've been brought to our attention, we would like to tackle them in a more permanent solution this summer. Whiteboard replacement project, that's just something Jason and I have been talking about. They're looking to convert, to move away from the, I'm sorry, what are they called?
Chalk boards and smart boards.
Smart boards. The chalk boards and smart boards, and go to a whiteboard installation, and that would also have camera projector abilities that would go onto the whiteboard. New carpet and VCB, that's Vinyl Cove base in the conference room. That's just a request that Jason's had, and I agree, the conference room's a little bit of a, little bit of an echo chamber right now. So just an additional adding carpet to that space to help quiet it down. And the Cape Elizabeth Middle School, this has been an ongoing project that I've been dealing with, with Siemens, our mechanical contractor, and we have some upgrades that need to be done within that boiler room to get it functioning, I'll say, a little better than what it does now. Recently, it's been kind of unpredictable. And we found some areas that need improvement with controls and things like that, and some of the boiler stacks that had issues. So this price is just looking to do upgrades and repairs within that space. Replacement of a six-inch shut-off valve, that's just a valve that no longer closes, and we needed the capability for it to close. That's on the heating system. Painting of the eighth grade classrooms, again, that's just in summertime maintenance that we do within that building. Bleacher reinforcement for safety code, that was pointed out by Hussey Seating when they did their inspection, that we, just due to the age of the bleachers and their style, there's a brace that they can put in to help just kind of reassure that those bleachers will be able to take the full weight load that they are designed to hold. Right now, it's questionable. Exterior door, again, exterior door and hardware security upgrades, that's just going around the building. Twenty-one thousand looks like a substantial number, but that would get you about one and a half doorways if we needed to replace an entire doorway. That would be a double-sided door, it's a six-foot wide opening. Installation of a new sink in nurse's office. Some might remember I had that in last year's capital improvements budget. Due to a safety concern that we had in the Ponco, like Noel, I had to take from Peter to pay Paul. Unfortunately, the nurse's sink, that's where the money came from, just due to it not being as high of a priority. So I made a promise to the nurse and Troy that that would go back in and get done. So that's why that is in here again this year. And then resetting of the failing pre-cast window sills. That is something that was pointed out by Colby Company as one of the needs, and that's the pre-cast concrete underneath the windows in the wing closest to the playground in the middle school. It kind of bumps out. You can just simply walk by and you'll see they're just kind of set in there, allowing water to get in. And we have had, thankfully not wood, not too bad, but we have had moisture penetrations in those classrooms and some areas. Definitely could be worse than what it is, but it's something that has to be corrected. Cape Elizabeth High School, new glass door installation in the library. This is something that Jeff Shedd's staff had brought to my attention, but when we get into a security lockdown, it's difficult to secure the library. With those, those doors might be locked, but the classrooms or the staff room or anything on any side, if there's nobody there to secure those spaces, the library is then not secure. So we're looking at basically doing a set of doors where the carpet ends, that the library staff, if we go to a lockdown situation, could secure this area. And it might not even be for a lockdown, it might just be for a security thing where they want to use that end of the hallway or the computer lab, but still keep, we have to keep kids out of the library. So it's just having that extra security for this area. That would probably just be a full set of glass, solid glass doors. Continued window replacement, that's an annual thing that we Continued window replacement, that's an annual thing that we've been doing in this building, and that's just the aluminum-framed windows. Every year, we pick up new classrooms, maybe six classrooms, and we pop out what is already in there and put new ones in. That is not just due to any type of R-value that we're gaining from the windows or, it's, it's more than just the quality of the window. We've been getting water penetration, actually ruining walls within the classrooms underneath the windows. The Wens classroom was one last year that was done where it was, it, it's pretty bad looking when you, when you see it prior to the window going in. New carpet and VCB in the main office. That is Jeff Shedd's entire main office. That includes the assistant principal, the main desk area, Jeff Thorx area. It's, the, the carpet there is just at the end of its life. They had done a patch at some point where, where Joan sits, um, but the other area was never addressed, so we're looking to pull everything out of that room. And, and when these prices are more than just, anything here that's carpet-related is more than just the square footage of the room. The contractor quotes me a price for removal of all furniture and everything to take it all out and put it back in because our staff is busy doing waxing floors and things like that during the summer. So, I have them handle moving all furniture and disconnecting things. Installation of underground electric to the stadium concession stand, that was something that was pointed out by the insurance company. Currently, we run two extension cords. No safety hazard the, the way it's done, but the insurance company would like to see it a little more permanent. So, it's digging a trench over to the, over to the concession stand and putting an actual small breaker panel in the concession stand and just wiring it up appropriately. Exterior door and hardware security upgrades, that just goes right through with the entire school campus. Interior painting improvements, I don't typically with the high school, I go by what I see. Um, I mean, I know the, the high school here, the stairwells are kind of ugly right now, but, um, I also go by anything that Jeff reports to me that might be, need to be addressed at a classroom or anything like that. So, that's more of just a budget number for that ten thousand dollars. Carpet and VCB in the occupational therapist workspace, that is a room just off of the staff room area. Again, just carpets come to the end of its life and it just needs replacement. And new carpet in the chorus room, that is for acoustics. They currently have more solid walls, solid floor, solid ceiling. So, we're just trying to improve acoustics in there by, by getting something on the floor to absorb some of the echo. Campus wide, replacement of the utility van, I told you guys about that in my request. Security upgrades with electric locks, servers, and cameras. I have, I have a few locations that I know that need to be, need addressing with, with cameras in particular, um, but I know there's quite a bit more and it's something that I would like to sit down with, with each principal and go over what they're looking for in your school or, or where they're seeing the most problem before I go and decide where I think the thing should be. But, and, and with that, and Noel knows, I've been talking to him a while, for a while now, the, um, we, we might have to do a server upgrade because our servers are coming to the end of their useful life. And, uh, I can, we need to upgrade to a Windows 10 system and Noel knows more about it. I hand that part off to Noel a little bit and, um, we're, we're going to try to save some money and possibly buy the equipment ourselves and, and doing that part of the installation ourselves and not allowing the contractor to put a ten or twenty percent markup on that. So, we're working together on that one. And phone system server upgrades. This is a new one, that's a hot topic here in the high school. We are currently dealing with our phone system continually crashing probably numerous times per day right now. I would love to bump this up to possibly this year, but I don't know if the funds are there. And that's only due to the uncomfortable situation that Jeff's staff is going through where they're in the middle of a phone call or something and the phone just cuts out. Or, um, you know, a parent might be trying to call the school here and sometimes is unable to contact the front desk. Uh, we believe that, right now, all the controls or, or I'll say the brain of the system's in the middle school and it communicates to the high school through fiber optics. We believe everything with that line is, is good, doing everything it needs to. Noel's guys would know there would be other problems within the network itself if, if there was a problem with that. So, we know it's phone-related. The company that we have is NEC Phones and this particular equipment is no longer, they're not, they're not, uh, any, supported any longer. So, we now have to bump up our system and that is the cost of that price is to bump up the system with some server, phone server upgrades. And, um, it would also allow the ability to, anytime somebody leaves a voicemail for, here at the high school, you call a teacher and leave a voicemail for them, it actually goes to the middle school because that's the brain. I want to separate the two schools, so the high school has its own voicemail and middle school and Pon Cove have their own voicemail. I don't know why it was set up that way, but, so that, that's all included in that price.
Thank you, Karen.
So, with your permission.
Yes, absolutely. Kathy, I, we've made it more than halfway through the list for tonight. And so, um, it might be nice to take a five-minute break right now. Facilities and then we'll come back with Kathy Stankford.
We have a nice program.
We have a hat here from Kathy.
He's all business.
I know, I feel like I'm.
He's fantastic with my business.
Okay, Kathy, all right. I'm going to start.
I'm going to provide an overview of four cost centers. The Improvement of Instruction, English Learner, Gifted Intelligent, and Voluntary Services Cost Centers, and these, all of the information you need on, on one page. So, the Improvement of Instruction accounts, these include funding for the summer curriculum work that, um, that our educators make extensive use of. We've budgeted fifteen thousand dollars per school, um, for at least the last four years and we're recommending that remain stable. Last summer, we supported fifty-nine projects. That account also includes the school year professional development and travel. We arrived at the number by, um, giving each staff member three hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars for the professional developments itself and then a hundred dollars for the related travel expenses, although we're, we're flexible around that. But that's, that's how we arrived at that figure, is three hundred and fifty dollars per staff member. This account also includes money for course reimbursement. It's available to teachers and ed techs and the exact number of credits that we supported depends on the provisions of the FOC program. We also have money set aside for certification committee members, evaluation committee members, and the peer mentors. These are all DOE requirements and the specific stipends are negotiated through the, in the collective bargaining agreement specified there. And then finally, we have in this account, in this cost center, our universal screeners and standardized assessments. New this year is the ACTV, which stands for the Actful Assessment of Performance for Proficiency in Languages. And I wrote it down because I've not yet been able to commit it to memory. But this is the assessment that our, um, upper-level French and Spanish students are taking and they earn a particular score on that, then they will be eligible to apply for the seal of libiracy, so. And we have, given that assessment this year, and I understand that our students have done very well and we expect a number of them, then we'll, we'll be awarded that seal and we're really excited about that. And then as well, we budget through this cost center, um, on the online software program IXL that those of you who are parents are very familiar with and that is for skills practice. So, that's the Improvement of Instruction Cost Center. Then the English Learners Cost Center, this is divided into K eight and nine twelve. Oh, and I should add about the Improvement of Instruction, that overall, those overall accounts are up thirty-seven hundred dollars in FY twenty-one, I'm budget proposing. Okay, English Learners. So, this includes funding for two half-time English learner teachers and their associated expenses. Um, I'll talk about that in a second. And then also interpreter services and, um, books and supplies, which we have put more money into the books account this year. In fact, we introduced a books account this year. That's, uh, with new personnel, um, as well as the increase in the students we're servicing. We, we just, we're finding that we really need to upgrade our instructional materials and so, um, so the increase in our cost center will reflect that. We have twenty-two English learners in grades K through twelve. And then the position, I'll just talk a bit about that. So, um, in the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year, we budgeted for a zero-point-five English EL teacher. And then midway through that year, we increased that to a zero-point-eight because we had new families move in and we wanted to support their children. And we started off this year with a zero-point-eight, but then in October had higher, had to increase that position from a point-eight to a one-point-oh, um, again, because of increased needs, new families moving in. And it was recommended and we agreed that rather than having one teacher in three schools, that we'd have two half-time teachers. So, we have a teacher at Pon Cove and a teacher who works with the middle and high school students. And there is, it's kind of a combination evaluation of the increase to point-eight and then an explanation of why we're increasing to one-point-oh attached to my, to my report. Okay, so overall, we're looking at an increase of eighty-five hundred dollars for the English Learners Cost Center. Then the Gifted Intelligent Cost Center, um, this includes funding for one full-time GT teacher and then all of the related expenses, an online assessment for screening and identification and then books and supplies to continue to grow that program. We, um, we serve fifty-two GT identified students in grades four through eight. And that cost center, the proposal is that it will increase by sixty-two hundred dollars, which just reflects, um, a change in, um, in, uh, in staffing. And then finally, the Volunteer Services Cost Center. This provides funding for the, our volunteer extended learning opportunities, coordinators, salary benefits, et cetera. And, um, and that we're recommending, well, that will go up, uh, it's essentially flat, it'll go up two percent just because of the increases. That's it right now. Here, after you know, nutrition services and Marcy's coming, I mean, can you give us some information?
Yes, I thought I'd give a little orientation before Peter starts tonight. Um, I just wanted to give a little bit of background about the nutrition services. We keep nutrition services in a separate fund, Fund Thirty. State requires us to separate the fund so that it's easily accounted to the federal government from their process. So, we are required to keep nutrition services separate. The funding sources come from several different areas. I just wanted to kind of review this in the beginning of the year and others, but it's just a little point of interest for everybody. The federal subsidy for Pon Cove Middle School, Peter submits a claim every month, reimbursement, and this comes to about sixty-six thousand for the year for that reimbursement. The general fund from property tax revenue currently provides seventy-four thousand dollars to the operation. Scarborough, town of Scarborough, provides sixty-three percent of the director's benefits and salaries, the salary benefits, sorry. And the remainder of the funding of the program, which runs a little over eight-hundred thousand dollars, we think right now, Peter, we've tried, we watch it seven months, so it's going to come out by the end of the year. But the rest of the money's come from the school lunches paid for by students, faculty, administrators, people from the town. This year, currently, the general fund has seventy-four thousand dollars that's used to go into Fund Thirty. There's a few portion, a few sub-accounts that are in the general fund, travel, equipment, that kind of thing. And it's just a few. So, I'm proposing that we just make the entire expense of a transfer into Fund Thirty from the general fund. That's a slight difference from what you've seen in the past. That's why we included the detail so that you would kind of see what we're proposing. And, um, I have approval from our auditor and the state is, I'm not worried about it. I have my email and Tyler Backus of the state to make sure that that is okay. We are still getting our credit for the expense of the transfer for our subsidy portion of it, any other reporting necessary. But it keeps it cleaner and that way, the full subsidy goes into Fund Thirty without anything left, getting left behind in the general fund. It's just a clean way to do it. And when I get the final approval from Tyler Backus, I know we're going to have the green light. But I just want to let you know that that's what we propose and Peter and John and I have been talking about that.
So, to start out, the, I think the first seven years over here, we were break-even, um, break-even where there was no money from, from taxpayers that were part of our program. We were able to do that because, um, for one, our, our salaries were lower and the revenue was, was higher at the time. Now, we haven't had a price increase and we're only allowed to charge a certain amount of money for our school lunches, so our revenue can't increase anymore other than that. So, one of the reasons for me taking on the job in Scarborough was to eliminate, um, some of my salary in order to save some money. At that time, we had a manager that had gotten done, so we eliminated and we only have one, basically, an assistant director that handles both schools with me overseeing that and, and being in the building. So, basically, I'm a third, like a third-time employee, but I know I'm here for more. But, um, one of the things that we did with our revenues that we had to do was we carried all the costs of our, um, our licensing for our POS systems, our POS systems, our repair costs, our equipment. We've had some help with Perry and Noel with some of that, but, um, for the amount that we do every year, we have a menu software that we have to pay for. So, all that stuff was coming out of our, our revenue. So, I think last year, what the, what the transfer was, was fifty.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight or something like that. So, um, now our employees, I have, I would say ninety percent of all my employees have been over here ten-plus years, so they're at the top of the scale. So, our salaries and benefits are a lot higher than they have been in the past. So, anyways, we have twelve employees. We have twelve employees excluding myself and my assistant director. Three of those are part-time and nine of those work seven hours or less a day. We had one retirement that we did not, we did not hire, um, we just let that position go through attrition. One of the things I just wanted to, um, bring to the attention is we have, one of the revenue streams that we do is our catering. We've done a, um, a lot of catering actually this year and, which I'm grateful, that's a good revenue stream. We've done like twenty functions or so this year. But also what we're doing, one of the things is bringing in and doing special events. We did one last year. We piloted with, with Nate and Jeff and did a pasta dinner, which was really successful. We did a sushi dinner. And then coming up next week, we've got the police forces coming in to do it. So, I've got flyers for everybody. They're going to do a Mexican day. The Cape Police Department comes in and eats lunch every day at the middle school and Officer Galvin wanted to do something. So, Robin's been working with them in their advisory class and they've made cookies and then they're doing this whole Mexican Fiesta Day. And it's on a Wednesday because most of the police forces are going to be there. So, the chief's going to be there, everybody will be there. So, you're all welcome to come and do that. Think it's a great opportunity to bring them into the buildings and, you know, it's, it's good PR for them too. So, um, just going over some of this, um, some of the lines, just so you're aware, staff development that I have down there, our, our employees all have to have, um, training on a yearly basis. The directors have at least twelve hours, all other staff are six hours. We do an all-staff training at the beginning of the year, which is at minimal cost, but we also have to. we also have to pay travel, and we pay those people their salary for that day. So that's one of the things that we have. Repair and maintenance, we have two thousand dollars in there, that didn't even cover one repair, so Perry's had to pick up some of that until, and we had to buy a new piece of machinery that actually has made our deficit a little higher. We had to replace a failing piece of equipment that was a safety hazard. So we've got that all done, but then again, those twenty-two thousand dollars that we weren't expecting to do. And the fund transfer, that's what we were talking about, so Marcia said about transferring and having it basically preloaded, and then having line by line. It's kind of how I do in Scarborough, and it makes it cleaner, as she said, and also keeps the, the state are able to do their calculations and whatnot with the subsidy. So, and one thing that I find is a, as a challenge, is with the new food shaming bill, if anybody has heard of that. Historically, in Cape, it's been, we've had a high negative account balances that we've rolled over every year. Currently, right now, we're owed about twenty-two thousand dollars that comes out of our, out of our department. So we, we send emails, letters, calls, so that's money that's still owed to us. I just wanted the board to be aware of that. That's going to be something I may be addressing later on down the road, with clients. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. All right. I'll have it correct though.
Thank you. So key component and strength of the Cape Elizabeth Athletic Program has been the diversity of athletic offerings and the range of competitive levels for students to explore and pursue their interests. This doesn't happen without the hard work from our students, families, and outstanding faculty and staff, and the support of this community. So I sincerely thank you, or express my gratitude to all those involved. Couple of increases to the athletic budget to note are in the officials' fees for high school and middle school. It was a total of three thousand six hundred dollars, and that result was from a rate increase. Also, in, at the high school level, there was a two thousand dollar increase in the use of charters, bus companies, that if we do not have enough drivers for a particular day, occasionally we'll have to use charter companies. Also, an increase in the high school coaches' salaries, that was a fifteen hundred dollar increase, and that was to reflect the potential results of the collective bargaining agreement with Teachers Association. And a decrease to note, because it's, it's in the larger athletic equipment items that we use. Last year, we purchased the gator that is used to transport water and ice and all over the fields. We use it for setting up our postseason and preseason equipment needs. I mean, it's, it's a valuable piece of equipment, and the timing, that was in the budget last year, the timing was perfect, came in two days after, almost perfect, two days after the previous gator had finally, transmission was just completely gone, so called John Deere up, and literally two days later, it was already on track to be delivered. So timing worked out well there. But we do need to replace the Hannaford Field storage shed. Right now, that, that shed was originally probably on the track at one point, and prior to the track, I think it was from one of the local businesses from the eighties, maybe, you know, eighties and nineties, I think it was Andy Strouts, one of his, from his farm. And also, need to begin replacing our portable bleachers on Holman Field and Capile Field. There were a couple of, or there were, there was one staffing proposal that I think is pretty self-explanatory, but just will quickly go into it. It was for middle school indoor track and field coach. Currently, we have two coaches. This will provide necessary supervision, safety, and instruction for practices and meets, logistically, with two people. Extremely challenging for two coaches managing fifty to sixty students on a daily basis in multiple locations. And the next staffing proposal was for an athletic assistant slash groundskeeper. That was a point five, so it's a part-time position. Marcia, I don't, I didn't, I don't have the figures on that, but I don't know if you have them yet as well, so we can-
Yeah, in my notes, I don't want to say it off the top of my head, Jeff, because it was forty point five, but I want to say it was around twenty-four thousand.
Okay.
But I have that in my notes, too.
Yep. This was designed to assist the athletic department with maintaining the athletic fields, and I'm going to go into this a little bit more in depth, but I'll just kind of provide a, an ex, a description first here. Designed to assist the athletic department with maintaining the athletic fields, equipment repairs, maintenance, event management, whether it's pre-game setup, coverage, post-game, support with uniforms, equipment inventory, ordering, scheduling, various responsibilities in the athletic department. And to just add some perspective, for the scope of the athletic program, at the high school, we have forty-six teams, seventy-four coaches, so that includes booster-funded and assistant coaches and volunteers. Three hundred ninety-eight of the five hundred and thirty students that are currently enrolled, seventy-five percent play at least one sport. So generally, about seven hundred and sixty athletic contests plus total. The middle school, we have twenty-eight teams, twenty, twenty-six coaches. A number of these coaches actually coach more than one sport. Eighty percent of our seventh and eighth graders involved in middle school athletics, and there's probably about three hundred and fifty-plus athletic contests at that level. So that participation rate overall is about seventy-eight percent, about eleven hundred athletic contests, a hundred coaches, and seventy-six teams. So to dive into this a little bit more, I think it's important, very important, to note that this proposal isn't a reflection of a department or any staff for not doing their jobs. As the school and town and facility, recreational space and facilities, as, as those have grown, the staffing may not be growing at that same rate. So that leaves a gap. And that gap often falls with athletics being in the middle. So I work very closely with our facilities and transportation director and his staff, Public Works, Bob Malley and his staff, and extremely grateful for everything that they do. Countless situations where I've called Perry for parking lights, turned parking lights on if they were off during a big game, and immediately that happens. You know, Bob Malley, we, there were some nearby pigs from a farm that happened to escape and started rooting that goal crest prior to the start of a cross-country meet. And called Bob Malley, two minutes, Jim Green and his crew were over there helping get that course set back up so that the kids could compete, so.
You said we were able to take the-
It was, it was, well, somehow we were able to herd them away, and it all worked. But, so just countless examples of where, working with, with those two departments, and how thankful I am for everything they do. But as I'd mentioned, you know, there is a gap, and I did make some copies, I thought for sure Noel was going to have a PowerPoint presentation. So badly backed up, I have-
School board. I think I got six or something.
So I had printed a few. So these are some of the things that end up on the athletic department, often, that would be me myself. So everything from field maintenance at Hannaford Field to patching seams on Hannaford Field, installing the sound system back on the bleachers, track, and this is just a few, I didn't want to use too much paper. Weed whacking and bushwhacking the hill behind the Hannaford Field in order to provide some access for kids to retrieve their balls when they go over the protective screening. We have some erosion issues on Hannaford, so whenever we have a heavy rain, there is a lot of soot and sediment that will go onto that field, so it's a matter of picking that up and disposing of that. To fence repair at postseason, putting goals away, making sure that they're level and secure during windstorms, often heavy wind, we've had to batten down the porta-potties so that they don't tip over. So being caught, being, you know, recognizing when there is going to be a storm. And a little more on the porta-potties, just flattening them out so that they don't tip over if someone's using them. Filling sandbags, and then the last page, just, some of this stuff has to be done, there's just not enough time to do it, so I'll bring it home into my garage and do it when I can.
So Jeff, tell them you did all this stuff.
Yeah. So like I mentioned, that generally falls on the athletic department and-
Jeff.
Would be myself. So this is, again, I just, I want to do point out that it really is not anyone's fault. I think it's just, there's just a lot of stuff, and everyone has a lot of work to do. And sometimes, some of these things, they just need to happen, and to do that, I think we have some, you know, the expectation is to make sure that, you know, we have safe and, you know, appealing and good, good facilities. So that's something that I feel very strongly about, and we try to, to try to make that work. So it's, it has increased over the, you know, past few years, and I think it's important just to, for people to just know that, that's a, there's a, there's a pretty strong need there. So that's, that was my last piece there. Operational budget, pretty much status quo, but there are, were several staffing needs that were important to note. So that is it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
He does spend most of this weekend's weed cycle, so people know.
Pretty good weed watcher.
Probably old, not at home.
No.
So Department, nine thousand, the budget for the Office of the Superior Entertainment is about three cents, three percent. And that's mostly due to salary and benefit increases. There is also included in this some funding for course reimbursements. We have Marcia is going to start and wrap this program this year, and is continuing for Connor Brenner. So these are the reasons for the increases there. Department, nine thousand one is the school board line, and this budget has gone up five percent, mostly due to an increase in insurance liability and for membership, our membership dues to MSMA. And that did increase eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars this year. They haven't had an increase in many years, so this is an increase that they feel that they need to make. We were, we were one of the smaller, our district is one of the smaller increases, so that was good, but they're working to continue to provide the quality and breadth of services that they continue currently have in place, so that is the reason for the increase. So, you're done.
Everybody looks a little confused. I do have-
She's trying to catch your attention. Is it a new position? Uh, new position, sorry.
You're not done.
I'm sorry, I forgot. I forget about this one. This one was in to, in the budget two years ago. It's the support for the nurses, and it was put in two years ago as a part-time nursing support and a part-time special ed support. We've moved the, or are in the process of moving the special ed files to our offices, and last year, we cut that whole position. Talking to the nurses, they really wanted someone to have an LPN, have nursing background. So when they were entering the data, what they found was that if a person didn't have the LPN background, the data that they were entering didn't really mean anything, and it got put in the wrong places, and it was kind of a mess. So they really wanted to kind of start from the beginning and, and have an, add a point five LPN position, and that this person could also do some undertaking of the students, and have a better understanding of the medical field and the, for the inputting of data and for talking to the students. So I promised them last year when we took it out that we would rework it and put it back in this year, so it is, it is here. And this does represent a LPN. Now I got it.
Now we are done.
So this budget, this budget is our original request budget, and if you remember from last year, we did come in, I can't flash, it was around seven point five percent, and we worked it and worked it, worked on it, and we did get it down to a five point nine percent, and that was, that was our final budget, five point nine increases over the year before. This budget represents a thousand and eight percent increase, so we're not really that far off of where we were when we started. Want everybody at home to know that we are continuing, and will continue to work on this. This is, this is what we all believe that it would take to run our school district optimally, but we also know that we have to be just very responsible to the, sort of the whole, the community. So we will, just started really working on it, this is what we're putting out there, or we'll go back continually and look at it, so. And I'm sure that the board will have some questions, but we'll need to answer, and maybe that will, that will help us a little more, so.
I appreciate everybody and the time that you put into these presentations. I appreciate Donna reminding us, too, that this is the original request budget, that this is really, this is not the end of the story, this is the beginning of the story. And so, you know, we will have some work to do together. But again, thank you to each and every administrator and department director. We appreciate the time and the effort that goes into everything behind these presentations and the conversations that you have, and the teamwork that is behind all of this. At this time, I would like to ask the audience if there are any comments that they would like to make.
Let's speak on a couple of issues, just to, just to get them out there. So the, not many. I know that Jason spoke about the Pond Cove principal, Jason spoke-
I know that Jason spoke about the Pond Cove principal, Jason spoke about-
Win, I'm sorry to be rude, but do you mind, just for the-
Oh, my name is Win Phillips, and I am an English teacher at the high school and also the president of the Cape Elizabeth Education Association. That's what you're what? Sorry about that. So anyway, yes, Jason spoke about four lunch aids, two of which he was able to fill this year, and the idea of one permanent sub. I think that we all know that planning time is, is an issue, has been an issue at Pond Cove, and those lunch aids were meant to alleviate that, so anything that we can do to, to try to attract four aids, to free up time for, for teachers, that would be wonderful. And that sub position, I think, is a really, a really good idea. As we all know, it's very difficult to find subs now with a tight job market, and taking teachers out of their classroom or out of a situation where they may be engaged in planning to fill in for someone else, just doesn't, doesn't, it's not using them optimally. So, it would be good if we could, if those, if those things could be funded. Jeff also talked about an ed tech for the librarian. I can speak, I think, on behalf of the entire staff, that we have, without a doubt, one of the best librarians you would ever see. She's incredible. She will, she, you know, you ask, she's there to help you, but you should watch the poor woman running around. She is constantly on the go and overwhelmed with things, and I think that one of the, the school board's policy is to try to do everything to, to attract and retain people, and if, if we were to lose her because she felt like, you know, I just can't do this anymore, that would be, that would be a terrible loss for the district, because she is one of the best. And I think earlier this year, I'd spoken about some of the large class sizes, particularly in math, and I was glad that Jeff brought that up, because I think that that's, that's certainly an issue, and kids not getting that instruction, we know how important that is. So those were the things that I, that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Win. Is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight? So I would like to remind the board to please submit your comments and questions via email to me, not out to all the various people, but to me, because there is, every time, there's a lot of overlap, and so what we love to do is to consolidate and just ask the question once, instead of several different lists of questions. Jason gets one list, and the questions are consolidated. And having sat next to Heather and watched us, watching us take notes, I can already see the consolidation going to be able to happen, so please submit your questions to me, and then I can consolidate and send those lists out to the administrators. It would be wonderful if you could do that at least three days prior to the next workshop, which isn't until February twenty-sixth, so you have plenty of time, but I like to be respectful of the administrators, to give them those lists with enough time if there's any research needed to be done, so that they can be prepared, bring those questions back to us at the subsequent meeting. So, thank you for that. Board members, date that you want those to use? The meeting's on the-
It's on the twenty-fifth, so at least three days prior, so the twenty-second would be wonderful, but before the twenty-second also okay. So in conclusion, I'd like to thank everyone for committing to this long but important evening to start the 2020-2021 school budget review. We appreciate you being here, and appreciate the people who were here for a long time and then had to leave, and wish you a good night. Thank you.